Central School District Board of Education meeting for August seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Calling this meeting to order. Starting the attendance roll. We have. Miss Van Orton. Mr. Buno. Myself, Ms. Turner. Ms. Phillips. Ms. Steinbeck. Not sure if she should. Like, I don't know, but I was just wondering if everyone calls their own name or, you know, but, um. All right, but, uh. I'm moving on. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for its citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first order of business is approval of the draft minutes for July eighth, two thousand twenty-four organizational meeting. We had a full house that meeting. So, uh, do we have a motion, uh, a move to approve this motion? The draft minutes. All right, Ms. Van Orton. And do we have a second, Ms. Turner? I'm all in favor. One in favor. Motion passes. And we have an approval of draft minutes also for the regular meeting following a draft meeting. Similarly, uh, do we have a motion to, uh, do, uh, Mr. Buno and a second? Ms. Turner. And all in favor? Motion passes, all approves. Moving on to the board forum. I'm gonna start it on my right. Ms. Steinbeck, do you have anything?
Uh, no, nothing to add, thanks.
Nothing, thank you.
All right. And, uh. Moving on to the, to the, to the public forum. Read this. This statement here, residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during a public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or the superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the board their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections. It must be stressed that visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the, the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comment shall be limited to five minutes. Do we have any comments? All right. So, so moving on to the next part of our agenda. Capital project planning, phase one A status. Mr. Simons.
Uh, yes, I wanted to let the community know and the board that we have submitted to the State Education Department the drawings and specifications for phase one A of the capital project at the previous board meeting on July eighth. We reviewed some of the phasing information regarding the project. The phase one project includes the replacement of the Columbia High School roof, which is at its expiration date, basically, it's a twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five year old roof that needs to be replaced. Also replacing the outdoor basketball courts and the outdoor tennis courts. Project was submitted on July twenty-ninth to the State Education Department. Currently, the estimated approval time due to the number of projects that have been submitted from school districts across the state is anywhere between twenty-four and twenty-six weeks. If that timeline holds true, we would anticipate that we would be able to go out the bit once the project is approved and hopefully start construction in mid to late May of twenty twenty-five. Uh, moving that project through the summer. Roofing portion of the project at Columbia High School will fall over two summers because of the size of the roof and it's a complete replacement. There's also some areas of asbestos abatement within the roof. We've had our asbestos consultant go onto the roof and do some testing. So over two summers, the summer of twenty twenty-five and the summer of twenty twenty-six will be the roof. We do anticipate, based on the schedule, that the basketball courts and the tennis courts would be done, uh, over the summer and likely the tennis courts will be ready for the spring of twenty twenty-six. For the spring tennis season. We were able to consider the feedback that we received from the coach and some of the parents of the students that play tennis. Were able to find a design working with a Bella architect that could accommodate the ninth court. Rationale for the ninth court made sense to us and that typically a tennis match includes six singles matches and three doubles matches occurring at the same time, so that would enable families and players not to wait. You know, earlier, uh, they all can watch all their kids at once. There was an offset in the cost of that, which I want to bring to the board's attention. Some of the initial estimates that Turner Construction had put together included some amenities that we didn't ask for and weren't planning on having, including lighting of the tennis court. So when we removed the lighting from the estimate, it was never part of the plan. And we added the ninth court, the difference was about forty-five thousand dollars more to do, do the ninth court to accommodate it. So we did it in a cost-effective manner and it won't really put in jeopardy any future costs and that will be coming in other better aspects of the project. So we thought it was a good idea to do it to support the program. We also have high utilization from community members in the tennis courts and it's been a the condition of those tennis courts have been something that has been brought to my attention for a number of years and we're glad that we could replace them. So happy that it's getting in on time. We're proceeding with the design of phase one B, uh, which will include the work on the golf athletic fields behind the school as well as an elevator renovation and upgrade at the school. Everything is subject to change based on, you know, what happens regarding the State Education Department approval times. We try to be conservative in our estimate regarding the timelines to assume the longest amount of time that this could take, uh, to be approved. Everything is proceeding very well. And we're working very closely, effectively with our architect and our construction managers.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Do we have any comments from the board? On, um, the capital project?
Well, I think it's great, uh, great that we were able to incorporate the feedback from the family, community. I think that that's important. You know, that we're responsive to the needs. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Moving on to the, to update on summer programs.
I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Stiles. Introduce our guests.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. So before I turn over to Mr. Hartnagle, just wanted to give a, just a brief update on um, our, our summer programs, uh, this year. So, uh, we're running three, ultimately, I guess, three summer programs. We have our K A Elevate Program. We have our extended school year program and then we have, um, you know, high school credit recovery that's going on as well. So Mr. Hartnagle is the principal of our summer programs overseeing both the K eight Elevate Program and our extended school year program. The Elevate Program actually just ended this past Friday, served about a hundred and thirty students. Um, as you know, I believe this was our third year of having the Elevate Program and it was funded through the federal money, uh, which is expiring, um, you know, as we speak, you know, this, this year. So we had to make some decisions, um, you know, kind of the plan the whole time was to have the, um, Elevate Program be a targeted program this year. So we looked at our student data and utilized our Renaissance Star, uh, assessment data to identify students that we think would have benefited from this and open it up to those students. Um, for, so we're able to serve all of those students, um, families that wanted to enter that were, that were targeted there. Um, for our extended school year program, something that, um, you know, is, is driven by students' I E Ps, um, you know, and their, you know, their needs. That program has about a hundred and twenty students in it this year. I know that Mr. Hartnagle and, and a few teachers are gonna talk about some of the, the good work that's been going on, um, you know, this summer, but before I invite them up, we do have a short little video that was put together by, um, Mr. Adam about our summer school program. Um, so I'd like to invite Mr. Hartnagle, if he wants to kind of come on up and, uh, with a few teachers to just talk about some of the highlights and great work, uh, that's been going on this summer. I do want to say, you know, um, Mr. Hartnagle has done a great job this summer. Um, it's not easy, you know, summer school is not the, the easiest, um, you know, position. You're kind of taking kids from, you know, different buildings, bringing them together for a short period of time. Um, and he's done a really great job along with the, the teachers and, and staff that are in our summer program.
There's some examples of some of the work that students did. Sorry. All right, so we ran the two programs this summer. It was a lot of fun. Elevate ended on Friday last week, so we did a bit of a celebration for the students. We bought all their work that they wanted to display in the cafeteria. Each classroom that we had, uh, students were able to walk around on Friday to check out each other's work. And, uh, during the day, we celebrated with ice cream. So that was nice for everyone to have that. Um, so we still have two more weeks of the E S Y program. And everything's great. Um, students in the programs pretty much enjoyed it. Uh, they covered the Olympics, uh, booked the Maze Runner, had a lot of ocean theme, shark themes, fish, uh, as well as working on I E P goals. So this summer's been going super well and everyone's having a good time. So I'm gonna pass it over a couple of our teachers. They can share their perspective.
Hi, um, good evening, Board of Education. Can you see me? And East Green Bush community. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Corey and I'm happy to be here this evening to speak about the extended school year program. During the school year, I teach the third through fifth grade language concept special class at Janay. And I've had the pleasure of continuing to work with my students during E S Y. Our summer school program is one that our special education staff look forward to every year for so many reasons. First and foremost, we're able to continue focusing on helping our students make progress toward their I E P goals and maintain goals that they have worked hard to achieve during the school year. Within our half-day program, I'm able to continue running targeted small group instruction in both E L A and math, as well as incorporating science and social studies concepts through thematic units of study. I'd like to share an example of one of our weeks of study. Last week, my class studied ice cream and how it is made, culminating in an experiment where we made our own ice cream in a bag in class, tying together the texts we had read during reading group, measuring ingredients, sequencing, and following directions, and of course, sharing opinions after tasting the treat. Getting the opportunity to collaborate with special educators, related service providers, and teaching assistants from across the district is also an added bonus. Both my students and I always leave E S Y with new tools in our tool, tool belt, so to speak. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share about the extended school year program.
Good evening. Um, I'm Nancy Garcia. This is going to be my eighteenth year in the district, but I'm also Columbia grad, nineteen ninety-four. So East Green Bush is my home and I love being a teacher here. I love and look forward to E S Y every year. Um, during the school year, I am eleventh grade, uh, special ed and tenth grade, um, consultant teacher, um, primary instruction, curriculum equivalent, whatever the current name is for English. During the summer this year, I got to work with K two language concepts, so a huge jump. Which I wasn't sure how that was gonna go. I'm used to the eleventh graders. But what makes East Green Bush and the E S Y program so special is just how we support each other. Working with kids, I had kids coming from Belltop and from Green Meadow. And their teachers communicated really well with me. Here are things that work well. Here are things you might want to try. Here, um, the teachers that are in E S Y who are normally with younger kids, what do you need? How can we help? And it's been a great summer. And this is the first time I've been way out of my comfort zone in the beginning, but it's actually something that I'm hoping that I will get to do again next summer. So as she spoke about with the, the goals and where we're really focused on the goals through our activities and we have smaller groups, so we can do cooking and we can do, um, imaginative play and role modeling and things like that. The kids have a great experience. The teachers get to work together with, with all the different staff. We see each other as we're, you know, we go out and walk in the hall to see each other and it's just a wonderful opportunity for the kids, for the staff, and it really showcases how strong East Green Bush is.
Any questions at all from, from the board?
Just a little bit on background, is the program, um, are they voluntary or strongly encouraged?
Um, I guess it depends on the program a little bit. Um, so the Elevate Program, yes, is voluntary. K through eight, at the, you know, it was strongly encouraged for our, for our targeted students. And we had a pretty, a pretty good turnout, um, you know, from, from that. Um, with our extended school year, that is recommended through I E Ps. Um, you know, with that, so that's just a little bit different of a program. Um, and then, you know, the credit recovery program is, you know, high school students really looking at, you know, maybe they weren't successful in, in some classes and have fallen behind. So we have, um, uh, a program called Apex where they can come in and, um, you know, get that credit recovery kind of at their pace, um, there, so.
Right, a couple of questions. On the Elevate Program, um, half-day?
Half-day, yes.
And, and it was federal funded, but what was the cost of that program this year?
I do know, I, I don't want to give you a wrong number, so I can, I can get that to, to Mr. Simons. Um, roughly about forty-five thousand dollars, I think.
Are we looking to budget that for the future?
We would like to. We want to talk about that as a priority for next year, not making a commitment to it right now, but to have it on a list of things that we think we want to preserve. I think it's really important.
Especially since it's targeted now.
Right, with the students that are showing progress during the regular, to keep that progress going. In English and mathematics, reading in particular, literacy, we would like to try to keep a program that focuses on the students with the greatest needs who aren't part of the E S Y program. The E S Y program is funded through special education funds.
Right, yeah, so exactly. I'd, I'd like to put together, you know, during the budget season, a proposal of, you know, uh, continued K A Elevate Program and what that would, you know, what that would look like. And continue to have it be a targeted, a targeted program to keep the costs, you know, reasonable for us to, to consider.
How many students do we have in the credit recovery?
Um, the credit recovery is, I don't have the exact number of that because it fluctuates a little bit, um, really depending on, um, you know, that need. And you might have some students who ultimately, you know, they weren't successful for the, for the year and of course, but they really only, you know, maybe failed a quarter. So they're able to come in and get that work done pretty, pretty quickly, where you may have a student who, you know, was unsuccessful for a longer period of time and is gonna be in it, um, you know, longer. So that, that is a little bit different. Um, so I don't have the, the number on.
Because I know that's important because I know someone's failures is, we want to try to keep some kids on pace for graduation. So I want to thank the teachers for coming in and great program as always and serving their special education students. And hopefully that, uh, in September, they're ready to rock and roll, right?
Question, with the credit recovery program, so you mentioned that that is their completing the work, the, the term or terms that they failed. So is that an online program? Is that something provided by the teacher that they were with?
Yep, so it's not, so the program's called Apex. It is an online program with support from teachers. So there are, um, you know, some teachers who are in there as well, uh, to support, but it's really more of a, you know, kind of an at your own pace. Um, and then teachers there to support when needed.
Okay.
Right, one, one question. Um, I'm also wondering to, uh, how, how do we measure the success? I know like we saw, like, um, the charts with the summer drop-off in the education. I'm just wondering, like, through the summer program, you know, what kind of tools do we use to say, you know, how well it's working versus if kids, you know, weren't in the program or not?
Again, I'll, I'll go kind of through each of them. So, you know, for the credit recovery program, ultimately, we're really looking to see is, you know, our students, you know, getting back on track so that they're, you know, they're able to graduate in in those four years. Um, with the, you know, the E S Y program is looking at their I E P goals. Are they continuing to make progress throughout and not having that, you know, those ten or so weeks off without that, you know, without that education. So it's really tied to the I E P goals. Uh, the Elevate Program, um, you know, I guess it's a little bit challenging to have some, you know, hard numbers there. Um, as prior, uh, two years, it was open to anyone. So you may have had students in there who were doing really well throughout the year. I don't want to say everyone can't benefit from summer school, but clearly they can. But I think now having it, um, you know, that targeted program, what we're gonna be able to then do is see who was part of the, the summer program, look at, you know, where were they in their spring? Um, you know, that spring star, uh, data, where are they now gonna be in the fall? Hopefully, we're looking to see not that summer dip that we may have seen, you know, in prior years.
I just want to compliment the teachers and Mr. Hartnagle for making learning fun in the summer as well. The themes of the Olympics and the making of the ice cream and the other things that you do to keep it engaging. It makes the kids want to come to, come to the summer programs. And we appreciate the work that the teachers do to keep the learning engaging in July. So, nice job.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. So, so moving on to, uh, the discussion items, uh, there's gonna be a student, member of the Board of Education. Is, is this, is this yours, Mr. Simons?
Yeah, so, um, actually, Mr. Buno mentioned this, I think, at the first meeting or either the last meeting of the year or the first meeting in July. Wanted to keep this on as a discussion item. The New York State Legislature, uh, has a bill that I believe has at this point passed both houses of the legislature. It has not been signed into law by the governor that would require school districts to, uh, have a student serve on the Board of Education as an ex-official member, a non-voting member of the board. It's likely that the governor will sign this legislation and likely will come into effect for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. But there's been some discussion, uh, within the board that we may want to do that sooner than mandated, or at least have some thorough discussions of it so that we're ready. Um, I provided on the board agenda as an attachment, an update from the New York State School Boards Association regarding the process requirements for selection of the student board member as well as a copy of the bill, which was provided to me by, uh, the New York State Council of School Superintendents. There is some discretion that the board has on the selection process. It can be a member of the student body, such as the student body president. It can be selected by the high school government, which would be the student council. It can be somebody selected by the high school principal, somebody selected by the superintendent, or a student selected by a majority vote of the school board. I don't think it has to be either or. Legislation isn't clear. So I think you have a lot of discretion in how you want to structure this so that we're making sure that we invite any and all students who might be interested in doing it. That we, uh, make sure that the selection process is done in a way that shows that we are open to any and all students who want to participate, uh, in line with the board's goals to be inclusive and to support diversity, uh, involving student voice in the process, I think would be an important consideration and then ultimately a process that leads up to the board approving the person, but has a lot of input and student involvement in it. So we're selecting a, a student for service that, you know, meets some of those considerations. Kind of want to open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I think we could get somebody in place sooner rather than later. We can do something in the mid-year, let the students come back, have a process, like you said, Mr. Simons, I think we'll do something with someone. Or the team, we have him just to see, because I take the lunch or send this. And maybe we have a little group together to talk about a process, do like a shared document. I do, I think we should multiple criteria. I do like the idea of, um, you know.
And maybe, and maybe like see what, it says a third of the schools already have it, right? So what are they, what are they using?
As a way of kind of look at that. And typically, in the past, it's been a basically had to go to the voters to get that process approved. And then the board could use a criteria to make a selection. So if we can get some samples, it'd be great.
So I could take care of collecting some examples of how boards are doing now and then I, with the board's support, I'll reach out to Mike and any other board members that want to work, maybe me and Mr. Harton.
I would love to. I'd love to.
Okay, and then create a process that's open and
Run it by the board.
Run it by the, so I'll, I'll start organizing that and I'll get in touch with Mike and Michelle. Is anybody else here who?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Depending on what time it is here.
Okay, so I'll reach out and, um, we'll get a, a group going and we'll get some discussions going and I'll find out what other school board members, how other school boards have approached this.
Do you know of any around here?
I, I do, but I'll, many, many of them have it, but I don't, I don't know exactly which ones. You know, this is about a discussion among the superintendents. This is coming up.
I think one thing, if, if we do have some flexibility, it might even be worth just kind of thinking through a junior and a senior appointment and having some continuity and even like some kind of mentorship and I think even like being in pairs may be a nice thing for the students too. Um, and then like the junior would sort of immediately, like would be the presumptive senior, assuming they still want that, but it might just be kind of something if we have some flexibility.
Okay, I can look into that. I think it's important to have, um, the, um, student themselves do some upfront work to demonstrate their commitment and their interest in doing this as well as whether that's an essay or whether that's a a simple letter or whether that's something that is showing that they've put in some thought and the commitment that this involves.
I, I know, I would like to see where they suggested the student, either the student body president or the student government selecting. I would like at least some step of the process to involve the other students making the selection, the same way the voters make their selections. I think that would, um, help the students feel more represented by the person versus the person being just selected by the adults.
Does this, I'm, I'm just wondering, right, the interplay between this and the report out we get from student council, correct? They come and report out at the beginning of the board meeting. I, it's, to me, it's kind of a little bit similar, right? You're increasing your feedback in your loop and you're encouraging, you know, um, the folks who we really are here, you know, you know, to, to work for, right, and the students. So I think that that's great. Anytime you can in, incorporate and encourage and hear from the, those folks is, is an, is a win, is a win in my book. One of the things I would caution is that, um, I just don't want to, I think it's important to hear from different students, especially if we're elevating certain voices. It's really important for me that if it is voting that it's not the same people we see over and over again. Um, and I'm very cognizant of that. And so sometimes the people I think, you know, are in the, in the voting, when you vote for your class and who votes and, you know, who gets in front, I just want to be cognizant about that as well. I would like to be able to hear, if we're doing this, we, we need to do it right and we need to do it in a way that really, um, you know, responds to who we are as a board and, and what we're for. So I'd just like us to keep that in mind, um, as we go through this process. Being mindful of the voices that we're elevating and we're hearing from.
I think it has to be a process that engages any students, uh, really all students and giving them a fair opportunity to be put into this role. and giving them a fair opportunity to be put into this role and making sure that it isn't simply a popular vote.
Right, and, and.
There's a lot of layers to it that ensures that.
And what is fair, right, is different. Some people, what they think is fair is different from what's fair. Prefer, you know, if it's an equitable way, that that would be, I think, the best way forward in my eyes.
There, there's a part of me that said like, I wouldn't take it from the student body.
Yeah.
You know, like I think it needs to be somebody different. I think it.
Right, yeah.
But let's see what else everybody else does.
I saw the process where the student council officers come, let us know what's happening with student activities is completely separate from this. I saw this as a more extensive.
Yeah.
Well, not a report at the board, but the person is sitting with us having discussions.
Having the discussions, yes. But I think, yeah, so my point is that if it's similar to my eyes, I think that sometimes when we get the student council report outs, and we can probably talk about this as a different agenda item at a different date, is that I think sometimes we hear about prom, we hear about the dances, and that's great. But when they want to make a decision about changing what homecoming court looks like to be more inclusive, I would love for that to be brought here to the table, as well as write prom and those things. But I would love to hear it from, from their body themselves, how they came about that decision, rather than trying to decipher it from social media. So perhaps, yes, I do think having students on the board could possibly help us be more informed as well. And I, I welcome that. And I welcome, you know, the student council bringing, you know, more substantial.
Very good.
Items.
Okay. Excellent. So I will follow up with those board members who are interested in helping us to create an equitable and good selection process.
I just wanted to just add to, I'm still trying to learn the rules around, you know. No, all I was going to say was just that, there's just certain ways that we go about in the legislation that allows for us to, to, to actually select. So, so I think the best way, I think that's what you were saying, was the best way to actually create the selection is for the board so that we can inform the process, because the approval only could occur certain ways, right? Yeah, yeah.
So the board will be involved upfront in the development of the process, having it really be kind of laid out procedurally in written form. And then we work with the high school administration and the students to, to implement it. And then ultimately, the student is nominated and brought to the board for approval. That was my, my vision of it.
Sounds great.
So you're involved in the development of the process, but you're also putting your stamp of role on the, on the selection of the individual student.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vuno, for advocating for it. I think it's good to do it earlier than it's required. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, move, moving on to the, to the retreat date on the, on the board agenda, Mr. Simons?
Yes, I think we're all set as far as everyone being available, which is great. We worked through a couple of different options for September fourth at six o'clock. We have a calendar appointment, our board retreat development committee with Jamie from New York State School Boards Association, who is the director of governmental relations, I think, or board development, I'm not sure of his title. So we're going to have a meeting with him to discuss, you know, a perspective on what the goals of the retreat would be. We'll report that back to the board. I anticipate that there may be some kind of survey that will come out from the School Boards Association to all of the board members to participate in the input that we need to have a very successful retreat. For the purposes of the public, board development and board training is an important requirement for boards of education. Agenda for a board retreat has to be focused on board training and board development. It's really to get, to work on the relationships among the board, the focus of the board, communication structures that make for an effective governance team. So it's something that we have done annually and we're proceeding to do that on September fourth. And I appreciate everyone who provided some input and help in getting the dates up.
Awesome.
Looking forward to it.
Is Nisba going to send out, Jamie sent out already kind of survey or anything?
I think he, there's been some discussion of that. We're having a Zoom calendar meeting with him next week to discuss it, and then I think he's going to follow up with that.
So we'll talk about what the, the goals of the meeting, what we want to accomplish with him. And then he'll, he'll have a survey that he sends out to the board members that will inform a little bit more of how, how he'll run the meeting.
And we will have, it's a six o'clock start time, so I know that's challenging for some people. So we will have dinner available for everyone and stuff we just taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Welcome.
All right, moving on to the, to the regular business part of the agenda. This is approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Are there any questions or comments about, about this agenda item? So what will move, do anyone move to, to approve this motion? Ms. Steinbeck, second, Ms. Kimerzky, all in favor? All right, so, so motion passes, and I skipped over a discussion item. So, 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 so the approval of programs passes, going back to recent NICE professional development for the Board of Education members, an opportunity for us to.
So I know a number of board members participated in some opportunities for professional development that were provided in July. Some of you went to the leadership conference, which is right here. And Albany others went to the law conference, and Mark Mann went to the law conference. He sent me the packet. He's not here this evening. And I attended for our firm school law briefing. So I just thought it would be good for us to, even though we only had one meeting in July, everyone knows that the board members stay active and are learning about their roles as a board. And I didn't know if anybody wanted to report out anything that they thought was particularly interesting and beneficial that we might have to follow up on in terms of some things that you might want us to consider doing that you learned about at these trainings. I know Emily.
Yeah.
And Jesse, and Jennifer's not here, but I know Jennifer participated in some training and, and Mark Mann, among others, I think.
Yeah, I, I can definitely talk about the leadership in education was a two-day conference. So on, on a Friday and a Saturday, and Jesse and I gladly, you know, took time off and showed up on Saturday as well. And I think it was really beneficial. And it's one of the ones, this is my second time going and I'll go every year that I can. One of the most impactful things is hearing from the New York State Education Department. And they kicked us off and it was a panel, and you had a lot of deputy commissioners there, a lot of people who are, you know, the leaders who are making certain decisions at the state level and hearing their perspective and where they want the education system in New York to go is really, is really enlightening and helpful, I think, in, in keeping that big picture context. One of the things that I've really thought, oh, I gotta, we gotta bring this back, is that they talked about, you know, the move, kind of the, and we've talked, I think we've talked about it before, is, you know, the stress on regions and the exams. And not moving away from it, but thinking about if that means success for everyone, what does it mean and how do we make sure that everyone is included? And I really thought about, you know, how we've already had that, right, as our goals and, you know, all learner-focused. And one of the things that they talked about, which, you know, I talked to one of the deputy commissioners afterwards, and we're hopefully going to link up with her, is they, the state did Portrait of a Graduate. And they really are interested in partnering with districts on, you know, how that looks and, and, you know, feedback from it. And, you know, I said, we just, I went up and talked to, to this deputy commissioner afterwards, and I said, we just, you know, start, you know, did Portrait of a Graduate. And, you know, I would love, I'm sure the district would love to, you know, be a part of that. I'm sure that they don't exactly align. I think I knew that they didn't, but there's a few that did. And I think that speaks to, I think, the work we're doing, matching up and perhaps a little bit, right, before on trend with what we'll see from the state. So I think that that was really reassuring that there, you know, that the state's, you know, priorities really align with ours as well. And that's always, I think, great to, great to feel, to know and feel so you're not having to put in all this additional effort and you kind of, you know, feel justified in what we talk about and the efforts we put in. So that was a really great session. And one of the ones, you know, I look forward to is the state impact there. The other one that I very quickly will talk on is there was a session called Measuring Success for All. And it was really essentially harnessing the power of data. And I felt like that one, you know, everyone in the room lit up, right? And everyone was seeing how two districts presented, how they were using data to make informed decisions about what success looks like for the district, who the students, student-centered data, right, about, you know, their success and some areas they needed improvement, and they were able to make decisions based on data that they had. And thus, you could see their outcomes starting to trend right in the way that they wanted. And I thought that that was really great to, to hear. And I know that we talk a lot about data here. And, you know, we just had a presentation, I feel like that brought data, which was great. And hoping that, you know, we can possibly share that presentation and then think about how this, how our district can really harness data as well. Maybe in conversations we're having are things we want to focus on. One of the things too that they talked about in that is doing a culture survey, and that was the whole district community-wide. And they talked about there was a lot of power in that, understanding where the perceptions was and, and where the community felt. And I thought that that was really interesting, right? And how they're, we're able to have that feedback loop with the community and the larger, I think, folks, maybe they, or voices they wouldn't hear, hear from. And talking about how you're getting data that is measurable and you can trend over time. And I thought that that was really, that would be useful as well. And I know when we talk about certain things, things we want to do or where priority should be, I think about, oh, if we knew or if we had, you know, some sort of idea of where, where folks stand, might be helpful. So wanted to share, share those two quick points and things I, you know, took away, so.
And Jesse sent me that presentation today, and I've already started some conversations with Mr. Styles about it. And I thought it was, I thought it was pretty impressive, how they organized their data.
I think so, and like, yes. And I think the issues that they had, right, were not issues I think that, that we specifically experienced. So like the context of it, right, is, is not exactly, but how, really, it's like how they assessed a problem, the tools that they used to do it. It was the method and the process. And if you're a process person, you ate that up and you realized how they're making informed decisions and how then they're going to get the outcomes that they want because they're very strategic about how they go about doing it. So I thought, yeah, I thought it was very, very, very useful. Yeah, of course.
I just wanted to share too, my favorite part of it, like, you know, is, my, my favorite part of it really was getting to know you better, right? What, no, 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 seriously, because it's important, especially in a to-the-board retreat, right? It's because part of it is, you know, when we say, you know, all students, seeing all students, you know, it's, it's a culture, right? It starts with us seeing all each other, right? And, and by learning each other, what, what matters, how we see things. And, and, you know, just looking at that from a perspective of, of how we put that inside the policies, that, that really was one of my favorite parts. You know, thinking about too, about communication challenges that the Board of Education was, was having, you know, where as they were pursuing seeing all students and identifying success for all students, some people in the communities were viewing it as making less rigorous standards. So it helped me to appreciate that as we consider like Portrait of a Graduate, you know, communication is vital. You know, the truth is, we're, we're not making it less rigorous. We're considering how to make it more rigorous to apply to a wider range of students, whereas the prior standard was limited just to a certain subset. So I think, just thinking about how we message on these communications, it definitely helped me to appreciate, you know, as, as, as Ms. Steinbeck was saying, how in E G we're always leading, you know, the conversation, which is very encouraging. You know, I'm thinking about Portrait of a Graduate, our capital project, bringing A Cs into the school. And also our student council, considering that as, as part, and it's just all, like, we're always on trend. And, and I would just add, you know, really thinking intentionally about when we say seeing all students, what do that mean? You know, we're targeting everyone. How do we get to everyone? You know, because in the process of making sure that we elevate the unseen, we also don't want to mitigate those who are overheard so that everyone can appreciate that they have a seat at the table, they're being listened to, and we care, you know, about the mass. So, you know, I definitely appreciated the conference, so.
I appreciate that board members take the time to participate in those types of sessions. And I'm actually looking forward to more conversations like this when we go to the NISBA convention. And New York City this year, we'll have some time to reflect on those sessions together. And it's always a good growth experience and it always, always brings something back to help our students. And I appreciate that commitment. Just briefly, I, I attended a couple of different things in similar vein. Dr. Cruz always organizes a summer institute for the superintendents in the component districts. And I've always participated in it since the first time I've gotten here. We did have some great presentations and some great conversations this year. The first was presented by, you may know, you may not know, the movie, I gotta think of the name of it right now. It was a producer, movie producer of Napoleon Dynamite. Have you ever heard of that movie? Who is now doing, in addition to producing and directing movies, doing professional development and leadership consultation. And he focuses on being a producer, you know, how do you get the best out of the people around you as he has had to do as a, as a movie producer? How do you tap into the talents of others around you to produce something? And, you know, bring everybody together to produce something, which was an award-winning film. He also weaved in themes about being, the importance of sensitivity to students like the main character in Napoleon Dynamite. And that character was actually autobiographical about himself and how he grew up and some of the experiences that he had in high school, not quite feeling like he fit in. Weaving in some such experiences where he himself was a contestant on The Price is Right and kind of connected that, showed us that, that clip and kind of connected that to some of the things that we, we do in schools. So it was really, I, I went in as a skeptic and I came out really happy that I went to that portion of it because it really had a lot of meaningful connections to school. Then he has, now he's publishing children's books. And he, he presented us with an autographed copy of a children's book that he wrote that I dedicated to somebody in the district. We haven't given it to him yet, so I will not tell who that is. But it's about a child and acceptance of a child who has some pretty bad habits in terms of her way she keeps her room. So it was really meaningful and, and, and connected. And it was nice to meet him and he was very gracious. We took a photo as a group with him and I went back and I watched the movie. Second part was, as you know, science of reading is an important initiative. And Gladys had her staff and curriculum development specialists gather data from each of our respective districts about some of the programs and strategies and interventions we're all using that are consistent with the standards for the science of reading, some of the assessments. And we felt after that present, that data was shared back with us, we felt that there was a lot more in common among our districts in terms of how we're addressing reading and maybe utilizing different tools. There really is a solid basis within our quest, our three region component districts that we're on the right track regarding what the governor is expecting and the state education department will be coming out with in terms of literacy instruction. We had a great presentation from the panel of U Albany experts on A I. And actually got to do some hands-on trials in terms of working with A I. And we had some good conversations about the line between allowing your staff to utilize it and then at what point do you loosen up? And with the help and support of our technology directors, start to have students utilizing it. And with the help and support of our technology directors, start to have students utilizing it. Um, there are a lot of resources available through U Albany to help support this effort. And Mr. Styles, Peter and I are meeting, I think tomorrow. Uh, to discuss some of the things I learned and I'm gonna share with them some of the tools and uh, links that were shared with us. That was really pretty uh, interesting. And then we had somebody from the state education department, it may have been the same uh, assistant commissioner that you spoke with. They gave us an update on the rollout of the new uh, graduation requirements. And um, one of the things that she emphasized, I think the state is going about it in a very thoughtful manner. It may have been reported in the media that the reason they're no longer uh, doing regions exams. That's not really an accurate portrayal, as Emily just said. Uh, regions exams will continue to be an option. But there will be other pathways and and other measures that you can measure how kids are beating those uh, Portrait of a Graduate skills. Uh, including uh, authentic assessments, portfolio assessments. Evidence that students have engaged in certain activities, including community service, such as the seal of civic readiness. It was a good collaboration and as superintendents, we were very supportive of the direction of the state. Although we have some questions regarding funding, of course, and other things that um, will come into play in terms of districts being able to implement for all students, you know, all the things that uh, we're talking about. Very good experience. Um, I also went to the Farrar Farm School Law Conference, which is a one day event. I provided the board with a packet. Uh, there was an update on various considerations regarding uh, seniority and personnel in terms of considering um, both educational law, certified people and civil service in terms of the district's obligations for considering seniority and those kinds of things that sometimes are unclear. Uh, there was a good presentation on student discipline and Title IX. Uh, as well as how Title IX applies to employees. Uh, there are some court cases pending uh, where states are uh, seeking uh, some different uh, approaches than the US Department of Education is putting in uh, place. So we talked about that a little bit. I'm in the process of, after attending that presentation, I've sent sent in all my central office people a copy of of looking at our first policy committee agenda. And there's some work that I'm asking Farrar Farm to do to review our policy regarding bullying, intimidation and harassment. And let us see the presentations to see what we can do to be more consistent in the way that we respond to those kinds of issues in our district, so. Um, even though we've only had one meeting, it's been a busy July. And um, I appreciate that the board gives me the opportunity to learn. I plan on bringing some of this information forward through some various committees.
I have a, I have a quick question, Mr. Simon. Just just along the lines of of AI, um, and part of it being the district goes to thinking about differentiated learning. Um, when we talk about all students, I'm just wondering, just as the AI discussions develop. And um, thinking about like whole learner focus and also future driven education, particularly the future driven education piece. I think when we think all, all, all students, I think differentiated learning, AI could be a vital resource to to push that goal.
In addition to tools that could be utilized on students for individualization, there were interesting tools that are available as uh, AI tools to provide professional coaching to teachers through AI. Which I found very interesting. It is an opportunity to explore that.
And um, the Leadership in Education um, conference, there was a breakout session on AI as well that that I attended and um, can share those as well, documents as well. But um, this person was saying that um, you know, there's a variety of uses. And um, if you take the stance that we're not going to embrace it or look at it. Um, you know, we, it's like you, you might be doing a disservice to the students, to the staff, understanding that it could be a powerful tool in efficiency of of work and of the effectiveness and learning ability of the student. Not writing things for them, but helping them learn and understand. Getting immediate feedback on grammar and stuff like that, that normally would take a teacher mo- a lot of time to review, you know, initially things. Also, they mentioned that um, you know, they were, this, this person um, had a child that had an IEP and they gave all of the information. And even in the format and put it in the format of what it named that school district. And they said it was the best IEP that they've ever seen for their child. Um, and I just was so taken back by that. Um, and it really helped me kind of understand AI. And um, a little bit more on how to think about it when we're thinking about, you know, the school district as board members.
We have huge time saver for teachers.
For sure.
You know, and when Bill Daggett was here, he presented a similar theme. He said, we wanna help you get your nights and weekends back.
Moving on to the CSEA Automotive Mechanic Pay Rate uh, MOA. Are there any uh, questions about about this motion? Is there a motion to, or Mr. Simon?
I just wanted for the public's uh, understanding, as we've come to an agreement with the CSEA, which is our unit that represents the uh, bus drivers and mechanics, as well as uh, food service employees and some other employees that uh, we are able to hire uh, mechanics for the transportation garage at a higher starting rate. Than what we typically have been able to do within the contract at step three. Um, because we are having trouble filling those positions and the rate that we currently have at step one. One was uh, settled in the last contract, even at step two, we're not competitive with the private sector. So this is uh, an agreement that we would do for now and we're gonna continue these discussions when the contract expires later on this school year.
Thank you. So this will allow our new starting rate to be twenty eight dollars and fifty four cents an hour for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
I'm just, Marissa, what what is like the typical uh, market rate for 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 auto mechanics that we're trying to compete with here?
So in private sector, um, they are paid, um, what we've been seeing with candidates coming in at a much higher rate. Um, but um, you know, we also make sure uh, we provide all the information about being part of the um, employee retirement system. Um, we talk about the district benefits, so um, we have those benefits where they may not have that in private sector. So it's really just weighing both sides. Um, but just that initial coming through the door, we wanna be able to offer, you know, a minimum of that step three, which is the twenty eight fifty four. Um, just to enhance the number of applicants we're receiving and then we can have those um, conversations at the table. That these are the benefits we can provide and there is a retirement, um, so we we do our best to make sure they know that.
Some of the candidates that decline positions were making more than thirty dollars an hour.
Excellent. Is there, is there a motion to approve this MOA? Ms. Turner, is there a second? Ms. Ms. Van Orden, um, all in favor? All approve, motion passes? And moving on to a, to a amendment, a resolution to approve um, Mr. McHugh. And I'm principal at at Howard Golf Middle School for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
This is adjustment to his compensation, which is consistent with the agreement you approved at a previous meeting. That once the EG, East Green Bush Administrators Association contract was settled, he would get the same adjustment for the next school year. At the comparable rate to a um, off step, which is the administrators with the most experience, which was two point seven five percent. So this enables us to pay him that two point seven five percent adjustment in salary.
Jeff, tangential to this, what is the rough plan?
I'm gonna post for a new principal for golf middle school, likely in the late fall, uh, or late October, early November. Uh, the, every um, piece of information we're receiving from the state is that the state will not likely approve the waiver again for another year next year for uh, the salary earnings cap. Uh, Mr. McHugh is a retired administrator. He is part of the teacher retirement system. There's been a waiver for the last two years that we could hire retirees and pay them more than the cap, which is about thirty five thousand dollars right now. Uh, it's likely that will go away. And so we wanna start the process, and Mr. McHugh's done an exceptional job as interim. We wanna make sure that we have a thorough and um, a good timeline to to find a a replacement. So that's, that's the tentative plan at this point to advertise in the October.
Can we bring that back as a discussion item? Motion.
All right, Mr. Puno, yeah, do we have a second? Ms. Turner, uh, all in favor? Motion passes, all approve. Um, going on to committee reports, Ms. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Temple. I did provide um, a staffing report. Um, did anyone have any questions?
Part of that staffing report later on, we do have our candidate who is identified as the point, it's the uh, point six uh, health teacher and sliver of physical education here with us this evening, Courtney Townsend. So you'll be appointing her a little bit later on, but she is meant, her position is mentioned on the staffing report.
And we are gonna be holding new staff orientation on um, August nineteenth and August twentieth. We have a good uh, two full days um, with our new hires. And uh, right now, we are almost up to twenty, twenty new additions to our East Green Bush family.
I think it was great to see that fifty eight applicants applied
Yes.
um, took off. I really hope that it gives folks that array of uh, applicants to look through. And really hoping we get good, good people or good candidates out of that.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Cannon. So I don't believe we have any tabled motions, uh, a- a- any old business. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, do anyone need anything separated out or any questions about an item on the consent agenda?
I just have one, um, under B, obviously, we're, we're doing all the fall sports. So I just wanna make sure that we, and I think we did it last year, we implemented training for them and we're guaranteeing that, you know, a student, you know, awareness training, all that stuff, and that's all still being.
Yes, and actually we're doing some additional training from what we did last year. Uh, Mr. Styles, Ms. Cannon and Mr. uh, Jones are working on some DASA related training uh, above and beyond the normal DASA training that we do, which is the Dignity for All Students Act. We may have to do that in the beginning of the season due to the availability of the trainer. But we're gonna focus on specific issues around student to student relationships as well as creating a safe environment for all kids within the sports program in terms of positive coaching. And in terms of uh, some of the microaggressions we see in sports among the players. And we're gonna really focus on types of examples of things that come out in athletics. I don't know if Mr. Styles and Ms. Cannon have anything to add on that.
In addition to um, the DASA training, we're also doing a very um, detailed overview of the athletic code of conduct as part of um, that initial um, back to coaches night. Um, so we just wanna make sure that there is a um, an orientation that gets filed. And then also, um, if anyone um, cannot make one of the meetings, um, Mr. Jones is um, going to be having everything on another day as well. So we're gonna have two options.
And that will include all coaches required to be part of it, not just the full-time employees that we have serving as coaches, but the volunteer coaches. And everyone that may work on the outside of the district is required to participate.
I'd like to maybe think about how we can, um, I don't know, enhance that for the parents at the meet the coaches night too. I mean, we all have accountability to to teach our children to be respectful. Um, so it would be nice, in in in, I think Frank does do it. I'm just thinking, maybe we need to expand a little bit on what are the this code, you know, codes of the standard, you know?
Did last year was I thought was good, and I know Mrs. Kaminsky, you talked about it at a board meeting, is he brought in a sports psychologist uh, to speak to the parents. I've encouraged him to continue to find uh, outside resources and guest speakers to come to the meet the coaches night. Uh, I've also encouraged him to uh, make sure that uh, you know, everyone within the athletic community is aware that, you know, perhaps some of the practices that were acceptable years ago in athletics, they may not have been right, but they were acceptable, are no longer acceptable uh, within the athletic program. Um, particularly, uh, kids are more um, apt to internalize comments and things that are made nowadays than they may have been a few years ago, even a few years ago, because of some of the uh, mental health and other factors in the environment that affect the way our kids are growing up. So I've had those conversations with Mr. Jones and through the training we're trying to put together, including the uh, meet the coaches night, we're trying to emphasize that. Um, we want every, no different than the school or the classroom, we want every kid, every student athlete to feel accepted and the feeling that they belong. Separated apart from playing time, we want them to feel that they have a contributing role on the team and that they're valued for being on the team.
Right. I I, you know, I see it sometimes as as a parent, as a, just check it off. My, I gotta go to, I gotta go to parent night or whatever, but I do like the interaction, you know? Make it more actively engaging and and walk away with something more than just, I did my duty by going.
We're working with Jody Sullivan from Questar, we'll see to identify some of the training components. And um, Jody was the individual that presented the the youth empowerment
Yep, yep.
uh, program and we always had conversations with her, Marissa, and Terry Bordell.
Yeah, so um, yes, that additional training will be happening um, for all of our fall coaches. And then we'll have it lined up um, for our winter, our spring coaches. And then we see that as being um, you know, something that we do annually. Um, above, you know, all of our, our, our coaches um, have gone through the full DASA training that, you know, that is required. But this will, you know, be um, you know, our, our goal is to have it more targeted to, you know, how does that, how does DASA fall into being a coach in sports? And what are those types of situations that are, you know, not traditionally discussed in a school setting, you know, that that the sport? Um, you know, has a little bit of different dynamic that can happen.
So on this list at the bottom, it includes volunteer coaches. The ones above are all the paid positions, and I understand that there's in district, out of district um, as well. And then you have number two is your, is your volunteer. And there's, I think like five or six, and one of them includes, um, it looks like AD Jones. Um, so do all, do all of the volunteer coaches um, go through the same process as a normal coach? So all of these are adhering to all the same guidelines we talk about, sign all of it. We, they are technically considered, um, I know they're not employed by the district, but they are held to all the same standards, correct?
Correct. Um, we also um, uh, re- um, revamped our coaching application for this uh, school year. Um, and so uh, we had a thorough review of that. Um, uh, references were checked, fingerprinting um, was complete. And these folks will also be attending um, the orientation program with the um, trainings that
I mean, as a rent and license.
Perfect. And when we say fingerprinting, are we putting it through normal or do you also do, you know, um, the fingerprinting from different state agencies like OCFS to see if they have a
I also go through the New York State Education Department through Osprey.
Okay. And is that what teachers go through?
Yes.
And then Ryan Jones is included as a coach, is he coaching or?
I don't think he really coaches. I think he's there as a backup. Uh, unnecessarily, he's a certified licensed coach, so he appoints himself to be there as a backup for any given situations where maybe the coaches, if a coach has to go to the hospital with a kid with an injury or something like that, he's, he's approved to do that.
Okay. But he doesn't actually, is not like consistently around a specific team or whatever.
Thank you, that's helpful.
All right, excellent. Um, is is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Kaminsky, is there a second? Ms. Steinbeck, all in favor? Motion passes, um, all all approved? See, moving here, moving on to the addendum, uh, to instructional support.
Yeah, so um, uh, we appreciate um, the uh, um, consideration for an addendum tonight. Um, we um, are very excited that um, Courtney is joining us um, today. And she's going to be um, at point six health. Um, a point-six health teacher split between Columbia High School and Goff, and then, um, point-one physical education at Red Mill. So we're, we're very excited to welcome you onboard.
Congratulations, Ms. Townsend, uh, do I have a motion to approve this motion? Uh, Mr. Buno and a second, Ms. Turner, all in favor? Motion passes, all approves, congratulations. And is, is there any new board business? And we'll move down to the, to the public forum, um, I won't read the. I've seen nothing, um, board forum, any, any last thoughts? Um, I'll start, uh, with Ms. Kamersky.
Yeah, I just hope everyone's having a great summer, um, lots been going on, I can tell in the district, obviously, things are ramp up again pretty quickly. I appreciate the work that Marissa and the team are doing to get the, the place staffed up, and just, um, I think that there's a lot of work ahead for the board. Um, looking forward to the retreat and, uh, all the things that flow from there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Buno, nothing for me, Ms. Turner. Ms. Steinbeck?
I just wanna have appreciation for, uh, the summer bus drivers. Um, the ones that, um, we've had, or the one, one that we've had has been really great. Um, so I just wanna, you know, acknowledge that, um, the, the folks, not only the summer school teachers, but, you know. All the staff that are working throughout the summer to keep, to keep us going and the kids getting where they need to be, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. So our latest podcast, which will be coming out soon, focuses on our bus drivers and our transportation departments.
I'm there for it.
All right, so we, we, we don't have a executive session today, so meeting is adjourned. Or motion for adjournment, all right, is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Steinbeck and a second, Ms. Turner and all in favor? All right, motion passes, meeting adjourned.